Pat has something to say real quick.
All right, first of all, special meetings, I told everybody in the beginning and up to this point that they are not favored. It's not a good idea to have special meetings unless there's a specific, good reason to have special meetings. They are allowed by law and statute, but in general, it's just not a good idea. But in Oklahoma, if in Oklahoma, three members or a clerk want to have a special meeting, then they can notify the clerk and the clerk can call a special meeting. Or under your amendment code book, I think you have a provision where the mayor can call a special meeting if necessary. So I think what we would need to clear out first would be is if three members, I know, I think from what I'm hearing from the clerk, just one called to say, hey, we're gonna have a special meeting. But what I would need to know is if three members wanted to have a special meeting or not. And if they do, then I think, of course, you know, the meeting can be opened up and if there's a quorum, then we should proceed on with the meeting. But what we would need to know first, if there are three members that did want to have a special meeting, would be my first order of this. So I think we could just, there's four of you. And you mentioned one of you?
Yes.
Okay. Do y'all want to announce whether you did or didn't, or how do you want to handle that? If you didn't, then you can't call a special meeting. If there weren't three that wanted a special meeting, then it would be illegal to proceed.
My understanding is the three have to call the clerk.
I don't think that's necessary.
That's per OML.
Well, that's what I'll make up as fine. But what I'm gonna aim is if three members, and then we can clear that up tonight, on the record, if three members wanted to have a meeting and they were somehow contacting the clerk and the clerk called the meeting, then I think it would be illegal to proceed. So that's not what I, well, Nelsa's not there, but that's fine, but that's my, that's this logical thing. If three members wanted a meeting, all three wouldn't necessarily have to call the clerk. I think that's a better practice and it would be better going forward if there's a special meeting, but I don't know that that would actually be necessary. As long as three members wanted to have a special meeting, then I think that would be appropriate to go ahead and, you know, call it. And if you don't, if that's not true, or if you don't have a quorum, which you would need three members to vote to open up the meeting, tonight, if you don't have three members to open up the meeting, then you could not proceed. So first order of business would be just determine whether there were three, three members that wanted to have a special meeting, if that could be done. Something that would need to be cleared out. So how do you want to do it? I mean, do you want to go on and announce whether there were three or? At the time the meeting was called, someone called and said, we need to have a special meeting, Thursday, whatever. At that time, were there three members of the council that were in, you know, that wanted to have a meeting? Is what I'm asking.
I did.
You're saying you did, all right.
I don't disagree with some of them.
No, that's not the question. The question is, did you want to have?
Yup.
Okay, so at the time that the call was made and you had expressed your opinion or you wanted to have a special meeting?
Yes.
Okay, that's two. All right, Karen?
Okay, I went down and talked to Chris and Carla, she told me there was gonna be a meeting and I said, okay.
Well, no, what the question is, I'm asking you, at the time the special meeting was being set up, did you participate or did you agree, or did you, did you want to have a special meeting called for tonight?
Yes.
Okay, if that's your yes, then that's three council members that at the time wanted a special meeting.
Oh.
In my opinion would be that you could go ahead and open up, you, well, the narrative of calling a meeting to order.
Mary, you're signed up on number one.
All right. First and foremost, I've also gotten information from OML, I've gotten information from other city attorneys. If y'all three discussed together about pulling a special meeting, you violated the Open Meeting Act, plain and simple. Because the rule states that one of you calls the town clerk, says that you want a special meeting, she is responsible for contacting the other board members and seeing if she can get to an agreement. If y'all discussed the agenda items on this, you're in the violation of the Open Meeting Act. Ms. Mayor?
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
Go ahead. Okay. I disagree to some extent. If you got together as a group, the three of you, to talk about city business, I would agree that that is a violation of the Open Meeting Act. If you individually, like one member can talk to the other generally about procedure and you can even discuss, say, hey, you think we need to have a special meeting, two of you can do that. No, none, the three of you can't get together and do that. That's not a violation of the Open Meeting Act, in my opinion. But one could talk to one, one could talk to the other, and like I say, what you're saying tonight is three of you all had agreed and?
We did not have a meeting.
Well, okay, then that's what, I'm not saying they did or didn't, but she's, you know, insinuating, you're saying you violated the Open Meeting Act, it sounds like. In my opinion would be if, unless you got together as a group of three to discuss things about the city and all that, then that would, would not be. I mean, if you did get together, it would be a violation. And you can talk to each other individually, generally about things without violating the Open Meeting Act. So that's, that's my check.
You can't talk about city business at all.
So they can't talk, they can't ask, how would you ever, ever have a special meeting?
That's what her job is for.
So they can't ever talk about anything going on in the city as you're?
Not in three, they can't.
That's what I said.
Okay, Mayor, did you call it?
No.
Okay, because our code book says it has to be called by the mayor.
It does say that, but also there's, there's all the statutes and they say?
Yes, it does, but it says that three have to do it, have to call it, or the mayor does. But they cannot communicate among themselves. So I'm just gonna let you know that the OML has been alerted, the Attorney General's Office has been alerted, there was an open records request, it will be sent up there. And I talked to the Attorney General's Office and y'all have violated the state statute.
No.
And you can sit there and smile and laugh.
I'm not getting, I told you.
Road call, everyone's here but Allen.
At this moment, I resign as your mayor. I will keep my elected seat. This is an illegal meeting and I will not be the leader of it.
Well, I mean, with no ideas, there's no mayor, so at this point, though, there still needs to be discussion and action to appoint.
Your vice mayor can handle it.
Well, if this is a vice mayor, I'm the vice mayor. Okay, then proceed. You can proceed on with it. Eli, that's next.
Okay. Discussion and vote to appoint or not appoint a mayor? What motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Carrie Gregus, Mayor.
You go second?
I second.
Yes.
This is an illegal meeting, I abstain.
Discussion and vote to appoint or not appoint a vice mayor?
I make the motion to appoint Karen Vance as vice mayor.
I'll second.
This is an illegal meeting, I abstain.
Discussion and vote to move Dawn Havlin from all bank signature cards?
I make the motion to remove.
Second.
Yes.
I abstain, this is an illegal meeting.
Discussion and vote to add or not add Christina Bush to all signature cards?
I make a motion to add Christina Bush to all bank cards.
I second.
Yes.
I abstain.
Discussion and vote on public speaking and action to be taken, opinion?
I put this on the agenda, I feel like we should move public speaking to the gang of the meetings and let all the citizens that sign up to speak on anything that's on the agenda to have their opportunity. But I believe that will cut down on interruptions, it will cut down on the time of the meetings, the length, allowing everybody to speak on each agenda for three minutes. And I think it would be better for our meetings, it would cause less chaos.
Did you say remove it all? Remove it?
No, remove it to the beginning. Okay, stop.
Mary?
So my question is, you want to move it to the beginning, but you're gonna allow people to speak on each agenda, or about each agenda at the beginning of the meeting? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that you should be speaking at the beginning of the meetings, everybody can have three minutes to speak on anything on the agenda.
On anything on the agenda? Okay, so we can reserve the right to speak on an agenda item after there's a motion made? So how are we supposed to do that, the speaking at the beginning of the meeting?
I actually brought something for this. This was actually when I first got on the board. And it's, it's the way, do you remember Carla, when we first were doing public speaking? And this was actually on here, and our previous attorney said that she didn't recommend this because we was going off topic, off the agenda. I mean, this could possibly work pretty good and you get time to talk anything on the agenda.
Okay, so my question to you, since you've been made, Mayor, you're okay with allowing the citizens to continue speaking because you did say at the meeting prior that, in your opinion, the meeting wasn't for the citizens, it was for the board only? So I'm just asking, you're still gonna allow citizens to speak?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So let's clarify on this. Do you make a motion?
I'll make a motion to move public speaking at the beginning of each minute, allow, or the beginning of each meeting, allow three minutes on any topic on the agenda.
I'll second.
I second.
Yes.
I abstain.
Discussion and vote on police take home units and action to be taken, opinion?
I believe that, um, I feel like that our budget right now is in crisis and I believe taking home the units is adding to that budget crisis. And I also feel like that a lot of the officers live too far from homes and it's putting a lot of wear and tear on our vehicles.
I know on, on materials and, I mean, that's almost completed. And we started off 54,000 on that and it looked like as of the end of March, we had 2,400 roughly left, probably.
Yeah. And our vehicles are all, a lot of miles getting put on them, a lot of wear and tear. And the budget is a big issue. I'll make a motion not to allow police take home units.
Mary?
So several months ago, y'all had a meeting, it was approved or not to take home units. I believe Paula was the one that made the motion for it and Karen was the one that actually seconded that. For the chief to take one home, Karen made the motion and Carrie seconded it, but y'all also just purchased two units out too long ago, so I'm confused. Are you just gonna let five, that makes six units parked out here? I mean, what was the purpose of spending twenty, what, twenty-eight, twenty-nine thousand dollars on two new units? Y'all are the ones, two of you sitting here are the ones that voted to allow them to take home units. Now all of a sudden, you want to take it away?
Well, I, I think obviously this is based on budget and our budget is?
But your budget wasn't obtained a while back, and I'll get to that in the next session.
Can we go back and let them vote and let them make that effect immediately? Let them vote and not speak for?
We've got some others on that speak here. Sandra, Sandra Holsey?
I'm not aware of all the hot shrugies that's going on here, but my only comment would be that the police department is excellent. I like the way they control, we could keep them still. And every one of them I've talked to, I've tried to thank them all for their service because it is a dangerous job, no matter where you live. My only other comment would be, I appreciate you keeping the public speaking because I think that it's, it's very important. My background is I'm a retired nurse and second addiction, so I appreciate what you're doing and the hospital seems to be in a lot of trouble.
I feel like the situation has changed because you all had a special meeting, you did a pay increase even though you knew the budget did not support that. And you did that right before the election. You did that to manipulate this whole situation to cause all these problems. And I think it's a sad day that the city council would participate in that. Police, there is no value on your advice, what you're doing is amazing. No one is questioning that, but I know of here. But if there's no money in the budget because of that pay increase, the money's gotta come from somewhere. You can't run a business upside down. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I would like to say also, I mean, this, this budget renews July 1st. You know, we've, we've got, we've gotta consider what we've spent and be able to accommodate for that. And, I mean, amending the budget, we started off this year with 293,000. I mean, it is a lot of wear and tear that we did buy, two new vehicles to hopefully phase out two of the old vehicles, and that's something we spoke of, was we was gonna have to start phasing out vehicles. But what I think, I mean, I think that this is a strain on our budget right now, and our budget is very thin in a lot of areas, not just the police. Because that's all that's signed up on this. Do we have a motion on this?
I make a motion to take back the police take home units, the budget can afford it right now.
I'll second.
I made the motion to take the police take home units back because the budget can't
afford it right now.
I'll second it.
Yes.
I abstain.
Discussion and vote to allow or not allow ride-alongs in police units?
We need to go back, I may amend that motion for this to take effect tomorrow at 6:00 PM.
I thought police units?
Yes.
Out of eight, so revisiting, out of eight, you amended to take effect tomorrow at 6:00? You got a second on that?
I'll second it.
Yes.
I abstain.
Out of nine, discussion and vote to allow or not allow ride-alongs in police units? Any discussion on that?
I feel like it's putting the town at risk having people, civilians in the police units. I feel like that it's, if an incident comes up and there's somebody in there, it would cause privacy issues for other citizens if we're calling the police for some assistance. I feel like that if there was something that come up and that person's in that vehicle and they have to drop them off somewhere so they, they can tend to something that's an emergency that's costing minutes, and I just, I don't see the reason for it.
Well, in our policy and procedure, it says, no other than city employees and bonded law officials are allowed in police cars.
Okay, Mary?
I believe the, the policy and procedure, it states differently, but I also know that in a meeting, that it was discussed, discussed about ride-alongs, Paula Peavy made the motion to approve and Karen Vance seconded it. Because y'all, the policy and procedure used to say no ride-alongs. Y'all amended that from no ride-alongs to ride-alongs by Paula's motion to approve and Karen Vance's second.
Well, they're gonna change it now.
Can I let me change? Sure. You can change policy if you'd like.
And this is in the policy and procedure right here, page fifteen.
Can I speak? At any time throughout this meeting? Yes. A lot of things seem to pertain to my department and I'd like to bring an opportunity to speak. We'll start with the fact that we had a gentleman step up here and he wanted to discuss the raise that our officers got. Officers, I don't really feel comfortable giving out their situations, but they were put through a lot of endeavors to struggle financially, working here to stay loyal to this town and to provide a very acceptable amount of work when they came here and talked to it. They struggled through that until the board decided to give them that raise. All that did was barely enlighten their financial struggle. Now, I get it that it's not on the town or the council to bear the weight of their financial struggles, but I would say that it is on the town and the council to show some appreciation to the officers that give so much on a daily basis. Also, as well, I'd like to look at the fact that you taking their cars away is just gonna reinstate that financial burden that they have already had to endure for so long, serving your community and staying here with you guys. And performing CPR on your family members, riding in the back of hospital, ambulances all the way to the hospital in McAllister till their arms couldn't pick up. How about staying with your seizing nephew or your seizing grandson and staying by him the entire time? Consoling your families when you're standing over your dead members and telling them everything's gonna be okay? The biggest thing we've done is community outreach. And I believe also, what you're doing is depriving the town that you swore to represent in the most positive way for the town. You're depriving them of transparency to their department by their God-given right of their freedom of information to know what this department's doing. Whenever I try to broadcast transparency to everybody and tell them my door is always open and I am more than willing to have a conversation with them, that includes my officers as well. They have a God-given right to the information that is received on a daily basis to ride in the car with a cop. I firmly believe that our partial council, now partial council, is only acting on a predetermined agenda, and I believe it's unfair to the town that you guys are using the authority that the three of you have granted, and I will say that the three of you have granted each other, to overrule the independent minds that can sit on a council of five. I feel sorry for this town and what they're about to endure.
You were talking.
We're behind you, Kristi, all the way.
Not all of us.
All of us have.
If you could silence this for us, please.
I guess my opinion would be that whatever the chief of police is indicating for his officers, he knows more than the average person who's on anything. And for me, to try to say that I know more than he does, I don't think I should give him that.
Nathan Johnson?
Three weeks ago, we had that economic development meeting here in this room. And after the meeting was over, a gentleman asked me to step inside and skip to him. While I was speaking to him, I was helping him, his girlfriend, trying to get grants, I was doing kind things for them, trying to help them out. An officer in Dawn Havlin stepped out of that room, then I was showing a picture and told that if I didn't kick someone off the committee to discredit their name, that they were gonna write an ad in the paper about me saying I hate cops and that they were going to make sure I never use this building again for free. And that happened right here. And that is not okay for ride-alongs. She was sat back there shaking her head, yes, while he was saying, you won't use this building, right? There's the editor. Anybody wants to tell him I hate cops? Go for it, it's not true. But I do, I will not be bullied and pressured to commit fraud for anyone. And that was, that's pure corruption. That is absolute voter fraud, to try to use that kind of stuff, fake pictures, to bully someone, bringing a council member, and they're sat back there saying, you can't use this building, you can't do this, you blah, 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 we're gonna ruin you if you don't ruin him. That is corruption. That is absolute corruption. And that needs to stop. And that needs to be solved immediately. If that means no ride-alongs, then that, that's what it should mean.
I want to make it really clear, are you accusing my department of corruption?
I am.
No, no, I think, will you answer the question, yes or no?
I'm not answering your question. I don't have to answer your question.
That's absolutely correct. So that is your God-given right, your Fifth Amendment, Fourth Amendment, Second Amendment, First Amendment, they all apply when we're talking about God-given rights, right? Right? Do you understand what those amendments are in the Constitution? Okay, so you're telling me that a gesture that someone makes when they're acting in the public? Now, hang on, now you wanted to speak about this or we can have a?
That is openly requested.
Do we need to calm down? Because we can talk over we, is that correct? Is that what's gonna happen here? Are we gonna have an exchange?
He has the floor.
He has the floor.
He has the floor.
He corrected that in time. It makes me mad. He didn't.
He has the floor. Not you, he has the floor.
Enough, enough. Use it.
It is.
My point is, that should have never happened to anyone. I've not committed, I've not tried to fight with anyone, I've not had any problems with anyone. We're trying to do good things in the city, trying to get people involved, that's all we are doing. That was uncalled for and it was completely unacceptable. Unacceptable. And for the city administrators to step outside and say that they did it because they were afraid they were gonna lose their jobs if you three got elected is completely unacceptable. That is unacceptable. You cannot run municipality like that. That is corruption. That is the definition of corruption. And it's, I mean, she's on video saying it, that's what happened. She said y'all could do that. I mean, I'm not trying to fight with you guys, I respect police officers to the fullest. I do. But you, there, you have to be a loving citizen as well. That's all.
To address what this gentleman just said, now that he no longer has the floor and I have an opportunity to speak, most of the statements are not facts that he provided to you guys tonight. They do not cooperate with the police body camera that was activated and that has been reviewed. Also, as a ride-along, that does not mean that we- Also, as a ride-along, that does not mean that we can contradict their rights to have an opinion. If the, I didn't see who it was in the back back there, but the lady that made the comment about only the people that matter in this town, which my ideology would be everyone, but I don't know. If she wants to shake her head, she can shake her head. There's nothing against the law, it's freedom of speech, she can show a gesture. If she did it, she did it. We're going off of a lot of conjecture on third-party information, and we're trying to make accusations based on that. And none of that is credible. I have to look at the facts and what the facts are. Some people don't like the facts because they already have their agendas laid out and put before them inside their head. Can't please everyone. I think that's been pretty obvious.
Any more discussion on this? Do we have a motion?
I made the motion to stop ride-alongs.
Yes.
I abstain.
Out of ten, discussion and vote going to executive session, discuss the employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, resignation, or termination of Connie Stockton and Kevin Kirk. Do we have a motion?
I make the motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Yes.
Yes. Discussion and vote coming out of executive session, discuss employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, resignation, or termination of Connie Stockton and Kevin Kirk. She made a motion to come out of executive session. Okay. Discussion and vote on action to be taken, if any, on Kevin Kirk. Discussion and vote on an action to be taken, if any, on Connie Stockton, out of therapy.
I'd like to press on Taglin.
No second? I'll second. Mullin. Out of fourteen, discussion and vote on action to be taken, if any, on Kevin Kirk. Any discussion? Mary? Ms. Halsey?
What kind of action is being taken against either one of them? Told you you're voting, I want to determine it.
For any, any action at all.
Okay, and where did that come from? If I can be so bold as to ask?
Yeah.
Who brought it up?
It's, it's in the agenda.
No, I see that, but put it on the agenda.
Does it come in the agenda?
Yeah, what for?
I mean, I'm just, I'm curious as to why an action would be taken like that, we don't understand.
What, what happened that we didn't have action taken?
So, you're tableing it so there's no result on anything?
Right. Yes.
And I guess it counts too.
Then, the next meeting.
Which is the second.
It'll be the next regular meeting. The second, or, you mean like?
I guess on the eleventh.
Eleven, yes. Okay. Nathan Johnson? Do we have a motion out of fourteen?
I'll make the motion to take no action at this time.
Okay, you have a second. I'll second. Karen?
Yes.
Discussion and vote to pay or not pay Justin Roberts for thirty-six hours of annual leave?
I'll make the motion to pay Justin Roberts his thirty-six hours. I'll second it.
Yes.
I abstain.
Okay. Discussion on forty-seven, O.S. Section eleven, one sixteen, possibly authorizing golf carts, utility vehicles, and all train vehicles to be driven on Quinton City streets, and action to be taken, if any? And I believe we were all given a policy for that. Did we have any, Mary, do you want to speak on that?
Creating, in order to prove that you have to create an ordinance, right? Am I correct?
You would need an ordinance.
Okay. And in order to make the decision on this tonight, you would have to have your already-established ordinance to vote on that. I mean, that's, that's the law.
That's the procedure. You should have the ordinance prepared, and maybe, and everybody would do that to vote on it. Do we want to strike this, then?
Strike and protest.
Do we have a motion to table it or to strike it?
Table it and strike.
Okay.
Do you make a motion to?
I make a motion to table it.
No second?
I'll second.
Yes.
I abstain.
Okay, discussion on where to put trash bags from city cleanup, and action to be taken, if any?
What do we have, like, four plates in the city hall? We have two in the city hall, but they-
Bank, city hall, Billy Needham's told us today that we could use his and the hardware.
Okay, number eighteen, discussion on recent hiring of code enforcer, dog catcher, and action to be taken, if any? Mary?
I want to go back to the cleanup thing, or the-
Trash bag, oh, seven thing?
Yeah. What happened to the roadblocks that the town bought for about a million dollars?
That hasn't been purchased yet. You have any? Okay. Ms. Halsey?
I have a question about eighteen, is that being discussed right now? I wasn't on the list. So, if you don't hire a dog catcher, who's responsible?
Yeah, currently, our, our city council.
Do you mean the city to support them?
I believe so.
And how are you getting in touch with them if you don't talk to them?
You were called city hall. Okay, Nathan Johnson? Any discussion on this?
Is this on number five, eighteen?
Eighteen.
Right, so, because you jumped me on seventeen. So, what is, because this, in order to put something on an agenda, it states that it has to be where the citizens, when they read it, can understand what your intentions are with the agenda item. This is so vague, I don't understand this.
On out of making?
Yeah. I mean, discussion on recent hiring of code enforcer, dog catcher, and action to be taken. It's so vague, what, what was the purpose of this item being placed on the agenda? Because it has to be, you have to have an agenda item that's decompelling, citizens when they read it can understand why that item's on there.
I understand that.
Are, are we hiring a dog catcher?
We weren't hired. We weren't hired.
I agree with her.
I don't, I, I agree with what the city did, I, I can understand, we need their clothes, we need people to clean up their mess. So, let's go.
All right. Do we have any discussion on this, Alan?
Well, I understand that the OMLB says that our chief is our code enforcement pressure, and I thought Jimmy and mine always did our dog catching, so I just didn't understand why we are needing to hire or make another position for that, especially with the budget right now.
I'll strap curly towel on the podium.
But y'all can't make a decision out here without a justice, especially if you really need them.
I make the motion to table it.
Second. Okay, adjournment. Tech folks, adjournment.
I'll second it.
Public works call to order. Road calls, we're all here for Allen. Acknowledge appointed mayor and vice mayor from the county meeting. Discussion and vote to remove Don Havlin from all bank signature cards. Do we have a motion?
This was a, um-
This is separate topic.
Do you have something to do it on both sides?
Do we have a motion?
I make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Yes. Discussion and vote to add or not add Christina Bush to all bank signature cards?
I make the motion to add Christina Bush to all cards.
Second. Discussion and vote on public speaking and action to be taken, if any? It's on both meetings. So, just make the motion to keep it the same as the other?
Yes.
Yes.
So, you second it?
Yes.
Discussion and vote on water, take-home vehicles, and action to be taken, if any? Mary?
I'll pass.
Any discussion?
I don't see the reason why I'm being to have somebody, I mean, why they are allowed take-home unit for the water department. I make a motion not to allow it to be part of the water.
You second it?
I'll second.
Yes. Discussion and vote to allow or not allow ride-alongs and water vehicles? Any discussion?
I make my motion to table it.
Yes.